All right, thank you. I'm gonna call the Town Act and Planning Board meeting to order. Today's Thursday, September 16th, 2021, and it's 6:03. We got everybody in here tonight, so no alternate. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
I will move that the minutes of the September 12th, 2021, meeting be approved as written.
Could I get a second?
A second?
All in favor? Five, nothing?
I had one quick typo, just in the first paragraph, little business whitetail ridge. In the highlighted section, loom should be changed to loom. Because the loom is the...
Yeah. No weaving.
Weaving.
Thank you.
Lots of people still call it loom.
I know, but I...
But it's not correct.
I've seen it a couple times, and I don't think I've changed that.
All right, we'll move on to the public hearing, the conditional use amendment. CA plant proposing to build a structure in the pit location map 230 lot 006.
That's like a big plan or a small one, dinner?
I had mine from last time you were here. This is the public camp. Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Well, we probably want something so the camera can see it, so... If we could put a big one with a camera, because it's a public hearing. I don't know how many people are here for the hearing, but people in the camera might be.
That one? Will you hold it up?
Yeah. But it may not be the final.
Right.
But it may not matter either.
We can hold it up to the camera for a minute. Did Jason just go to get... Hold on, Jason might have went and got something.
He got it.
Yeah.
Where's Joe Stanley with his gold?
Oh, uh...
The easel, that's where the camera...
I know. We kind of missed that. Here are our public hearing part of it, so just hold on to that for a second. I think Jason might have went and got something. He took off.
Because we got to review whatever he's going to get anywhere, because it's probably the final one.
Yeah.
I guess I take a little video.
What's that?
You want a small one, too?
Yeah, I guess.
Because you got them there. You can hand those small ones out, I guess, if you got them.
If you want it, could you hand some out to the members of the public, too? Do you have enough, or... So they can see?
Thank you.
Anybody want one of these?
Yeah, I want one.
Just so they can see it, so they show it out, so...
You know what we're talking about.
Move the gate on this one.
I think we need the gate, because the location of the gate was...
Yeah, right? Pretty much.
I'm going to drip edge for the runoff we talked about.
Yeah.
And then use the water. That's different.
Well, it needs like a... You're right, I think we need something for the camera.
On a stormwater drain.
The camera can see it.
I think it's... Are you ready?
Yeah, she just gave it.
Oh, it's attached to you?
Yeah, you did.
Maybe you can put it over there, please?
Thank you.
The septic's outside of the office side.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just the water lines, the drip edge, and move the gate. That's all I can see.
This went up from 3250 to 5190.
So you know we're one upping Joe Stanley on this?
Very observant.
Hmm, yeah, I wonder why that happened?
Well, it doesn't make sense to me, except for being into it, you know? Because otherwise, if there's water coming off, it's really going to make a mess with the truck.
Yeah, we should get some drip edge, maybe.
Want to have Billy come up?
Yeah.
Come on up. You want to introduce yourself?
William Plant, owner of Charles Plant, son's excavating and paving.
Is it going on top of that roof?
We hear it this way for a public hearing. Do you want to just tell us a little bit of the project one more time? And that way the public can hear as well.
I could hear everything you said.
Mine just described the...
Just describe your project.
A 40 by 80 building for storage of equipment with a lean-to and a utility room. On our gravel pit property, on West Shore Drive, in Acton, Maine.
We were just taking a look at the changes that you made. You have a drip edge on the building.
The drip edge in the blue arrow showing the water flow that's going to come off the roof in the direction we're getting it to go, towards the inside of the pit.
And you moved the gate.
This is the, this is the public hearing part, Pat.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's for the, for the public to ask if they have any questions.
Thank you, John.
Does the public have any questions?
Maybe if you explain the use of the building a little bit more, just... It's a storage building, just maybe if you explain the use a little bit more.
Yep, for store screeners, loader, and work on stuff out of the weather, change screens, something needs to be worked on or repaired.
Makes it a little easy to hear. Makes it a little easy to hear if the door...
Perfect, yeah, background noise gets me.
Does the public have any questions?
There's, so no one from the public wishes to be heard on this matter, is that accurate, before we close the public hearing?
I think we came down here, we were concerned, we were on Willow Street, and there's been so much surveying going on in our street, everybody's questioning why surveying plus-plus. They did it two weeks ago, they're doing it again yesterday again, and no one has an answer. So we're just concerned as to what's going on. It's not being concerned.
This has nothing to do with Willow Street?
Right, this isn't near Willow Street, so...
That's why, I'm sure.
Yeah, no.
Nothing to do with me.
That's a figure.
Yeah.
We would like people to ask to know the same thing.
Any other questions from the public? No? I guess we'll close the public hearing.
I did have one request. If I don't build the utility room now, when I get ready to build it, can I go straight to the code enforcement officer instead of having to come back to the planning board?
Yeah, as long as the conditions are approved, then if he...
That was it, I'm not sure if I'm going to put that up right now, just because of the cost of everything. I just really want to get the shelter up to put stuff in for the winter.
Yeah. All right, I guess we'll close the public hearing for, uh... CA plant?
Yeah, never mind, go ahead. I think one of the things that we just wanted to do is when we get ready to pour the slab... This is not in the public hearing, anyway. I just want to have it pinned, have Joe pin it.
Yeah, I would have, when I, you would see it when I come for an inspection, and it would, Joe would have it on paper exactly where it is according to the permission you got.
Yeah, that's just the only concern that I had, is that I want to make sure that everything gets pinned before we start pouring, because it's a big structure.
Yeah, I'll have it pinned before I even dig it, and then it'll be pinned again for the foundation guy to pour, and you'll have a copy of the paperwork, so you'll have a few records.
All right, we can move on to old business, which is CA plant again. Do you have any questions for... I know you started with a question, Pat.
I was just noting the changes that we made, that we asked for, to make sure other people
That looks like you made the parking lot area bigger.
I don't think, I don't think so. We just, we just made it to the lean-to and to the front of the utility room, that was it.
Well, just as opposed to this, this drawing here, which didn't have the pavement going back to the back of the lean-to.
The parking lot's a lot smaller compared to what we originally had when we first started.
Right, this one says 3250, and the new one says 5190. I don't think it makes a big difference, but it is a change.
I did notice that, but I'd like to pave the width of the front of the building as shown on that plan.
Plus the lean-to.
Yes, yep, the front of the lean-to to the front of the utility room.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then I also noticed that you're, you've got the drip edge on there.
Yes, yep.
But it goes on top of the lean-to. Are you planning to put it around the, around the lean-to as well?
It would go on the side of the lean-to, yes, correct.
Yeah, just to...
Just to try to, yep, slow it, slow any water down, exactly.
And you've got it on top of the pavement. Are you going to have any sort of drain there, or is it just...
No, we shouldn't have a drip edge on top of the pavement. We shouldn't even really have it on the back of the building, because there'll be no water coming off the roof on the back.
Two gable ends.
Right, it's going to shed this one. I'm just looking at this.
Right, yeah, I know what you're doing.
I mean, because that's what we're...
That's your boy Joe.
He's watching.
Where is he? And I guess we should probably just read through what's on the big plan, so that we...
Yeah.
Are clear on all the...
The legal.
Do we got the one, one copy? Is that, that same as this one?
You want to read through it, or you want to break it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't... I mean, it would be good if we'd read it already, but, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of would help if Joe was here, if he's planning to do that.
Do you know if he made any changes to this? Do you know if he made any changes in here?
I know, I asked him.
It's just, um... A reference.
Pitched to the road?
Well, it's a reference to, uh...
On your utility storage room, is that pitched to the road, too? Is that pitching like this off the side of the gable as well?
Say that again?
The storage room?
Yep.
Is that going to be pitched off to the side?
The gable would be facing the road.
Right, but the storage room is on the side of the road as well. So does that have a pitch to it, too?
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the utility room.
Yeah, utility room.
The gable end of the utility room would be facing the road, so the water would be pitching towards the paved area and then towards the back.
Okay, so it'd be...
Yep.
You'll have, you'll, this is the main building, then it goes like this?
Yep.
These were conditions for the originals, they don't really relate to the building.
Because it just has that, right?
Gavin, the earthwork ones, those from the original conditional use, or is that...
Well, number, number 17 and 18 have been adapted. The last two were just kind of added on.
Okay.
I was kind of looking to see if anything about the stormwater was added for the 25-year storm, other than the arrows. But I mean, that should, that's probably enough. Now, this, this proposed well right here, about how far from that well are you excavating now? Aren't you like over here?
The reason we put the wells in that area is I want to dig that back line first, and then we can work out way towards the road.
Uh-huh. About how long till you get to...
I can...
This area here?
But this fall, I should have a well in this fall.
Yeah.
For that one, yeah.
Can we, I'd like to make that a condition, that we get the well in this fall as opposed to just sometime in the future.
I don't have a problem getting it before the ground freezes at all, no problem.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
It's going to be, yeah, he said approximate, that well is going to be probably not too far from my setback line.
Uh-huh.
We've really mined very little out of there so far, there's just not a lot of room.
Right, right, no, I went back there when I did the...
Oh, okay.
First site walk.
Perfect, so you got to, you got to walk, yes. You see, we're still pretty tight down.
Right, right, but it's just, you know, something we want to, it'd be nice to have a timeframe for it.
Yep, I don't mind putting a, you guys can write a note on that if you want, to be done this fall before the ground freezes. I can actually, when I dig for the foundation, I can actually put one in. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be closer to that 250 mark, maybe what that says approximate anyway, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
If I put it with that shoulder, it's going to be right in the traveled area, where we're
You want to just put it before the ground freezes, or fall, or do we have it?
I can have it there for when you come to do foundation inspections.
When's that, tomorrow?
Ah, gosh.
Right, yeah, okay, so...
Within the month.
Okay, so I'll just put before, before November?
Once you put before December, just to be on the safe side.
Prior to December 1st?
Perfect. As soon as they get the green light to, to dig for the foundation, I will, I'll put it in when I'm there to dig.
Now, if you hold off on your storage or utility room, are you still going to pour the foundation for that this fall?
I'm not sure, I'm just putting pricing together for everything right now. That little, that little utility room is almost the cost of a regular house.
Right.
And I just really want to get the structure up right now.
Okay.
But the building will still be at the setback for the main building. The building's still going to be exactly where it has to be, whether that utility room gets put on right now or not.
And Bill, just so I'm clear, the, the building that we talked about, and the location, the distances, that's in that open area?
Yes, correct.
So you're not going to cut into the trees, it's in that...
No, more cutting towards the road at all.
You'll just have to cut towards the back near the septic tank, right? A little bit? You're going to cut back into the, where the septic tank is, right?
Yes, I'm still, that's, I'm still going to get a separate design, so the guy that's going to design it's going to pick the best location for that to be.
I think we could have a condition that it's located outside the 100-foot buffer, kind of like it is displayed on the plan, just so that we, yeah, don't end up with it in the buffer.
I don't think you'd do that anyway.
Well, I mean, sometimes the...
You should put it down, yeah.
Well, you're saying the septic designer has some...
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have a lot to say about where it goes.
So as long as it's outside the 100-foot buffer, we're happy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Whether it's in the front, back, or on the other side, as long as it's not in the buffer zone, you're fine with that?
Yeah. Is there anything else?
Are you moving your gate, or it's already, that's where it's located?
That, that's going to have, I think that's going to have to get moved closer to the road.
No. Oh, so you have to cut off your parking, so people can be going?
Yep, I just got to make it, I just want to make sure I can pull a truck and a trailer in there to the gate and not be in the road.
Did we read through all our verbiage last time on this?
I think so.
Yeah, I think we did. But now we're going to have two new notes to add, right?
Which is the well and the septic.
Right, we only voted on the placement, so I think we, I'll move that we approve Bill Plant's application for conditional use. I don't know where this is. Uh, tax map, 230 lot 006, with an additional condition to place the septic outside of the existing 100-foot buffer, and to additionally require the proposed monitor well, the first proposed monitor well be dug before, what did we say?
December 1st.
December 1st.
And the foundation or slab to be pinned?
Oh, and yes, so there's three conditions, and the, and also that the foundation be pinned before, before it's poured.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Five, nothing?
Thank you very much, so it's safe for me to go get a permit at this point?
Good.
Just bring my checkbook.
Yeah.
And this will have to be updated, right? Joe will have to update it.
Have the funds in the account, too. That's always helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to sign a copy tonight, or are we getting those two conditions on the paper, and then, or three conditions on the paper, and then sign it?
I'd rather get all three conditions, then sign it. That makes it more...
He needs to know that, because he's got to tell Joe Stanley to, because there's a couple more things. I mean, if we're changing the map, I'd love to see the drip edge put in the right place, We were just discussing whether, we're discussing whether or not we were going to sign one of the maps tonight, or we're going to wait for a new version of the map with the three change, proposed changes, or...
I don't mind if you sign it tonight.
I'm sure, but, um, the chairman said he'd prefer to have a final version.
Before we sign it, that way it's, everything's legit, and, you know.
Is that something we can do, not, not, I don't have to wait two more weeks for it to get that signed, do I?
Go call Joe.
No, just bring it to the code officer whenever...
Perfect, so if I have Joe drop that off beginning of next week, then I'd be all right to get a permit?
Yeah, as long as you're clear on the changes that we...
Yep, the monitoring, monitoring well, the septic can't be in the buffer zone.
Peg in the foundation.
You get the foundation has to be pinned.
And the drip edges, I can, I can talk to Joe, too.
Okay.
I get the notes, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Take it easy. All right, new business. Just go through some of these ordinances that didn't do well at the town meeting, changed verbiage or whatnot. If you'd like to start a doc, we can start the docs. Just got to find it in this, um...
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Do we know what's going on?
I haven't even been, nobody's even come to my office about it since I've been in there. Survey, you can survey all you want, you know, there's no construction, there's no construction permits going in my office for, for that land. You don't have that large parcel that runs along West Shore Drive. Where, you're Willow Street, where's...
Yeah, we're all on Willow Street, right? We're just wondering why all that surveying is wrong. Yeah, what's all that about?
We don't, I don't know, nobody's come to my office. Surveying can take place without any permits, so...
It's constant surveying.
Yeah, I mean...
Your backyard, the driveway, we were two times last week, we were there again yesterday.
So you're Willow Street, off of West Shore Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a very large parcel of land, I know that, I think 800 and something.
150, maybe.
Oh, is it 800 and 50?
That's what the survey that called me.
Yeah, so I don't, I know that takes a long time to survey something like that, but I don't have anything in front, on my desk right now, for any kind of work, construction or anything like that. So I don't really have any answers for you right, as of this moment.
What is, wait, I'm sorry, what is your name?
I'm Jason Sevigny, I'm the code enforcement.
What is it?
Jason Sevigny.
Jason?
Yep.
Okay, Jason, thank you. You, your office is in the building, yeah?
Yep, in the basement.
Downstairs?
Downstairs, around the back, yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, come and see me, anytime.
Yeah, they've been here a while, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't figure out what's going on.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, they, they haven't come to me for any permits, or to let us know. They haven't come for any kind of planning board issues, so I have no, I don't have any answers for you right now.
All right, thank you.
Apologize.
Jason, we've always been a very quiet street in the summer, between the trucks to the back and out from the end of West Shore Drive, to Austria, so they could turn around. I used an Austria, they backed up to Austria to turn around, and all this construction and truck, it's been crazy.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
That's what I'm just wondering, what are we doing now?
If there's any more, like, any construction that's going to be happening in that large parcel of land, and they're going to have to sit in, and have, talk in front of the planning board anyway, it's not, you know, it's not going to be, you can't just get a permit and...
Sir, can I ask what type of building this gentleman's putting up there? An atomic reactor, or...
No, so he's here because he had conditions on his other building, on a sandpit that didn't include a, a building, so he had to come back and change, have his conditions altered, so that he could put a building in it. And that's why he's, that's why he was here. He was just doing the correct chain to, to get what he needed. So, and that's, that's the only reason why he had to come in front of the planning board, because in the origi, the original conditions that they set for him to have a, his excavation or his mining area, they didn't include, he didn't include in the, the original application to have a shop there, he just wanted to have a, a sandpit for, for himself, so now he had to come back and add it to the conditions.
Is that his garage on Nation Street there? This, this channel right here?
No.
No.
He's got a big shop over in Lebanon.
That is, I think that's James Kittredge is what you're talking about, the plumbing?
Plumbing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's Nation Street, right?
Yeah.
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 The plan, there's another road dug in off of West Shore Drive. Where, where will it be moved here?
That's a, that's a driveway, actually. That's a, that's a driveway, actually, um, for one individual, they, they contacted my office, it's not a subdivision, it's a one-house, that's, he owns a parcel of land, it's just a driveway.
Yeah, Captain?
Well, the contractor here, it looks like it was usually turned by, it's the one.
Yeah, that's what, I know what you're talking about.
You mentioned the park, a lot across the street, I don't know, maybe else.
That's also, uh, one, another, uh, that's a house lot, that's a one-house.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, good.
You're welcome.
Docks?
Yes, Sophie.
So you guys are welcome to stay, but they're gonna be talking about, um, the ordinance. It might not be interesting for you guys, so...
We're pretty popular, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Enjoy your evening.
If you have any problems with this, it's down, who said one's what's going on?
Yeah, there's no answers for you right now, unfortunately, sorry.
Number one, page two, um, with regard to the general requirements, 5.1.6.1. It's talking about, um, a no cause break or dismembered dock or permanent dock or any permanent structure is the key that we have to address, shall be constructed in, on, over, or abutting any great pond, or, nor shall any fill deposited or dredging done therein without a permit from the DEP and acting code enforcement. It's the definition of structure that, um, is causing a conflict with the ordinance.
How so?
Cannot, under the definition of structure, it doesn't exclude, in our definition, if you go to the book, or active ordinance book.
Yeah, we didn't do the change for sewers.
Right, it's pretty simple. Just to keep it up to date with what the state has changed, we need to change it. And it leaves us open, oh, sorry.
Can I, how does that apply, I mean, I, I get it, we need to put that in there? I looked at several, uh, ordinances in nearby towns, and they all had updated to exclude wells and, and septic. I don't know how that applies to piers and docks.
Because it's, I'll explain it.
Interesting, the geothermal heat exchange wells is also...
Yeah, structure.
Not considered a structure anymore.
Because it's underground.
It's not allowing anything, anything under the definition, it's, it's not excluding the water system, um, wells or water wells. It says, um, any permanent structure. And because it doesn't exclude those, they include them.
Right, I get that, and I, and I, we have to update that definition, but I'm just trying to understand why that comes up in the discussion of piers and docks.
It's the wording of it, um, 'cause you can't...
Well, maybe we should just try to address the definition of structure first and then move to the docks after that.
Yeah, I, my recollection of the discussion there was, everybody wanted to know, what's the definition of a permanent dock? And I wasn't smart enough, and I didn't have my book to go look, and it's strictly time-based. And so if it's not over, I remember that, you know, is the dock that lifts up permanent or not? And, and we're getting grief for that, well, if it's not extended over the water, it's not permanent by the current definition, and by the definitions, I looked at three other towns. You know, they base it on time over the water, which if it's seven months or more, it's permanent. So, to me, the answer at the town hall was, if it's lifted up, so it's not extended over the water, it's temporary. And so you're okay, I mean, we wouldn't have to, Jason wouldn't have to waste his time.
I believe I have read that if they are installing one of those lift docks, they do have to go and get a permit for the permanent base that's holding it.
If it's in, if it's below the high watermark or in the water, that's true. But if it's not, if it's above the high watermark and not in the water, no.
It's not likely to be that way for those type of docks.
It's not likely to be in or out?
It's likely to need that permanent, it's not likely to be excluded from what you just said.
So you're saying that some of it would have to be in the water, is what you're saying?
It's close enough, so they would have to be able to lift it up and down, it would have to reach the water, regardless of the level, so it would be as close to the lake as possible.
Right, so again, to me, it was, and maybe I'm oversimplifying it, and given the town hall, it's dangerous, but, um, the, the, well, one town didn't rely on time, but two other towns did rely on time, just like us. And it was cut and dried, if it's in the water, if it's permanent, you know, something in the water or below the high watermark, then that's, that's permanent. If it's above that, and when you lift it up, it's not over the water, it's a temporary dock.
So the, so the footing is, I think you, that's on land, it's not in over the water, I think that's where they're, how they're getting away from it being permanent. I, I, I know what you're, I know where you're going with it, and I, and I had the same questions, too.
The company itself says in your literature that you need permit. I just recently saw that.
A permanent footing?
For the footing.
Right.
Before they will come and install it for you, for just the dock, this lift, the dock, it needs to have a permit.
Well, wouldn't that be considered abutting the pond? If you have footing in, right at the shoreline, and the dock flips up for storage, I believe that it would be considered abutting the pond.
I can reach out.
Footing stays in.
It lifts up, but it's still gonna be over.
I can reach out to the DEP and see what they're, what their thoughts on it are.
I think that we're not to regulate these anyway.
No, well, that's, that's a DEP permit, I mean, we, if, if it is something that is permitted, or especially from the DEP, it still has to be permitted, but from the town. But, um, the dock situation not, but if someone was to put in a, uh, concrete footing of some sort, they have to still come to my office, um, to have that installed and have it, you know, they'd have to go to the DEP, get the permit by rule.
Can you?
And then come in to me still, and because, just because the DEP approves it, doesn't mean the town, it's, it's allowed in the town ordinance. So, um, I mean, they still have to come, but I, I, I know where you're going with the whole permanent structure or a permanent dock, if that's permanent or not, I just, I don't even, you know, I'm kinda confused with it all, too. Uh, 'cause I thought, with, with the same way you did with a permanent concrete slab, foundation, area where they're, where they're anchoring their dock to, would make it a permanent dock, but it doesn't, the dock doesn't stay in the water, or it doesn't horizontally go over the water for the, for the twelve-month period or more than seven months. That's where it makes it not permanent. And then the, the footing is permanent on land, but it's not a permanent dock, but they would still need to get a permit for that footing.
Right.
So, I, I, I don't know, 'cause I was at that town meeting, too, and it was a lengthy conversation on the piers and docks.
I don't know if anybody else has this, um, DEP chapter 1000 shoreline?
No, no, maybe not.
Because it has, um, piers, docks, wharfs, bridges and other structures and uses, it's page 20. But, I mean, it does address what we're talking about.
Do you, do you have one?
Um, I don't have it with me, but I...
But you do have it. So I just wanted to make sure, if you did have it.
He's memorized it.
I do, thank you.
Bernard's memorized it.
Yeah, just put it on your pillow, let me go make a copy of it.
Well, then if you...
I can look on it.
I'm surprised I actually brought it with me. Yeah, C, right, Gavin?
What's that?
The section C.
Yeah, section C, piers, docks, wharfs, bridges and other structures and uses extended over or below the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland and shoreline stabilization. Wonder what, and shoreline stabilization is indicating to us. But anyway, um, number one, no more than one pier, dock, wharf or similar structure extending or located below the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland is allowed on a single dock. Which is, which is something that I feel like we need to address in our town. I feel like there are residences with more than one pier wharf. But, um, except that when a single lot contains at least twice the minimum shorefrontage as specified in section 15A, a second structure may be allowed and may remain as long as the law is no further divided. So it considers a, all these things to be structures. I don't know if it's gonna tell us what we're looking for. You know, give sizes for the things. No wider than six feet, things like that, which are... And we, you know, there are a lot of things floating in the lakes that aren't, aren't in conformance with this DEP guideline. There's number seven, no permanent piers and docks on non-tidal waters shall be, shall not be permitted unless it's clearly demonstrated to the planning board that a temporary pier or dock is not feasible. And a permit obtained from the DEP.
I think the, the long and short of this is, regardless of whether it's permanent or not, you're gonna put something permanent, five inches and all that, they have to go over to the DEP. And then, um, I think that the razor dock takes care of itself, because the people won't be able to put it in unless they've gone through. I think they've run into this before with different towns, and I think that they're just, go to the DEP and then go to the town, and then the people have to get the kind of the necessary permits ahead of time before the people that have manufactured a razor dock put it in, they won't put it in. I'm not too worried about that, but, um...
Well, it kinda, just, to me, it kinda brought us to the question of, do we like the seven months, or do we wanna go with the physicality of the structure? I mean, you know, I, I don't really have a firm...
Shapley went with the physicality in their definition. Shapley's, uh, definition said, "Structure either permanent or floating, providing access from the shore to the point offshore. Piers and docks shall require a conditional use permit from the planning board if they extend more than twenty feet from the bank, more than twenty feet, of any lake or pond, or ten feet from the bank of any river or stream." Semi-colon. "Or if they have any permanent parts located between the banks of any stream or below high water elevation of any lake or pond." Uh, semi-colon. "Or if they are constructed as part of any commercial use." Semi-colon. "Or if they require dredging, filling, or cutting any banks or shoreline." So, they didn't mention time, that, that was their definition.
I like the simpleness of the time, I can see some problems with restricting the number of feet a dock goes up per person because of the high level, low level of the water and being able to access their boat.
Right, absolutely, yeah, that's why I kinda was opting for a more like square footage of the total dock, so they could make it different shapes and, 'cause at some ponds, you need to be out twenty-something feet to get
Like on the backside.
But other ones, you only need five feet, you know, so... So that, but if we... You like the time?
The timeframe.
You like how we have it in the zoning ordinance now?
Which I don't.
Oh, this one? This is what we've got in the ordinance for... Is that in there?
Yeah, we didn't mess with the definition.
No, but the definition caused this problem at the town meeting, so it's...
Right, because they wanted to know if
'Cause we need to know...
the lift dock was permanent.
Yeah.
Our answer should have been, you know, if it's not over the water, more than seven months, it's temporary.
Yeah, no, and I agree with that, but at the same time, it's always there, it's like a permanent fixture. So that's kinda confusing, too.
Yeah, well, that's the...
You know what I mean, they don't like take it away and no one sees it, when you're snowmobiling, duh, 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 there they are. And I have heard of problems with them coming down, you know, in the wintertime.
Yeah.
You know, in which case it's there. And, you know, there's also, I don't know, I mean, it's, I always think about how much aluminum is going into the lake and, uh, aluminum causing Alzheimer's, it's always a, there's an absolute ton of those things in the lake. And like, if they didn't have the thing next to, you know, five feet from the shore, for that other five months of the year, I don't know, I mean, I can see it kinda both ways, that, that it is permanent and that it isn't permanent, so I, but we, but I think that's part of the problem we're encountering is that... Yeah, page 20 in there. You know, we have to kinda figure out what...
Well, if it's anchored by concrete, permanent, that part of that dock that lifts up, the rest of it comes out. You know, per se, you can always add length to it, but that piece would be permanent.
Right, and that's kinda what we're talking about, is that, that there is a, the thing, there are aspects of it that are permanent, but they're not in the water.
Right, and I think that's where you get a fine line.
Yeah.
What's going on.
But I, but it would be nice to
I think...
address docks in this town and that, um... I mean, I don't see why we need any permanent docks, I feel like they can all be like that.
Yeah.
You know, honestly. Or that they should be, just get the things out of the water in the wintertime.
I've personally never seen a permanent dock in, on any of the lakes, I don't know if Great East, I've been on Great East a few times, but there are some on Great East.
Those are the ones that float away, you know, after ice out.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I've seen ones that people leave in year-round.
Yeah, more just because...
But then it becomes permanent according to our definition, because...
They're really old.
Yeah.
You know, before we even had zoning, I think they're still...
Well, there's some that are just, you know, on fifty-five down drums that float with, it's like a deck and they just leave it in there.
Floating docks, yeah.
Yeah, and that is that permanent, according to our definition, that's permanent.
Yeah, it should be taking it out.
Right.
Right.
But just...
If it's on a pile, it should be taken out.
Right.
But I can see a need for, for a permanent dock for, for handicapped access.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure there's some, some necessary uses for permanent docks, absolutely, but...
And you have to go to the state, it's not easy to get one, so... The law and practice of law, everything is...
It's just funny that what they call temporary is, is permanently there.
Well...
You know what I mean, I mean, that's, that's the whole discussion, I don't have a...
I'm talking, if it's just lifted up like this, right? Or if it's taken off the hinge and it's put on the shore, is there a difference?
Oh, between those two options? Well, I think if they, if they hold it back behind the hundred-foot line, then that would certainly be different.
So we should talk them into making swivel ones.
But I don't know if people are gonna, you know, then you have all these other issues to deal with.
You can't, yeah, I mean, the whole, the whole point of it is that, unless people age out, they can't take the docks out by themselves, so this is a convenient way for them to
Right.
To deal with that, yeah, thank you, I thought I got that.
To me, the issue is that the dangers posed remain permanent. As long as it's there, the danger is there. If the dock is left in...
Yeah, people hitting them with...
The dock is hinged up, but then falls down, and people live out of state and have no way of knowing that's happened, the dangers to people out snowmobiling and so forth are permanent. As long as that's there, so I...
Yeah, sometimes you can't see them because of the snow.
That's the focus of, um, my scrutinizing this. It's not to be nitpicky or to say, gee, that's a shame, if somebody has to take that out, it'd be so much easier if they could leave it in, it's public safety.
You know, I have a dock and I, you know, Gary has a dock and you wreck your dock if you leave it in. And it's just, you gotta take it out or it gets wrecked by the ice.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't...
But maybe we need something that, um, just a couple of lines that tell people how it has to be stabilized when it's taken out or something that, that could address some of these issues. You know, maybe, you know, it has to be up a certain distance from the high water line like the, you know, it can't be like that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, maybe there's something we could do that would...
What happens if the cable snapped and the, and then it falls down?
Well, maybe if there was, you know, it has to be X type of anchoring system.
How about SAE approved, safety approved, you know, instead of a homemade thing?
Right, instead of just the same bungee cord for ten years, you know, kinda thing. You know, they have something that's designed for that. I don't know, I mean...
Yeah, you have a weight ratio, whatever it is, cable, that would, that would support a certain weight load.
Yeah, depending on the length of the dock and what it's made out of and...
So we're going with inspections? Like what, what, how we regulate?
Well, no, we're trying, that was the whole point of this. This yellow ordinance was to
Eliminate...
Make sure that, that we didn't have to, yeah, went from, temporary docks went from R, which was CEO review, to P, which was just permitted across the lines, but then...
We descended into what's temporary and what's permanent.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, man.
Which is hard to, um...
I forgot the legal language for structure when I brought up, you know, anything's off for...
Off this?
Yeah, um, because according to this, it's, um, you know, or any, or abutting any great pond, which is saying you can't put anything under the way it's legally interpreted. Is that correct, Bernard?
Unless you get an approval.
This has been important, so... And I've heard it more than once.
What did we talk, what did you, can you just repeat what you just said?
Definition of structure as it stands in our, um...
Oh, our book ordinance?
Um, does not match what the state has changed, has amended theirs to read. And I think it's important for the interpretation of the word as it applies, to exclude, I put in front of you and highlighted, subsurface wastewater disposal systems, geothermal heat exchange wells and water wells.
Yeah, I...
Words that they added.
I have no problem putting it in there. I already don't include, uh, subsurface wastewater disposal systems or, um, water wells as stru- as structures, but that's just what I...
Yeah, most people would, but it gets into the board.
Right.
That's, that's where...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you have a land dispute or, or something like that.
A big problem. It costs a lot of money.
Just, can we get a, a printout of the state definition of structure to juxtapose with ours definition of structure, or do we wanna just try to mesh this?
I think you should melt, I think you should melt them together.
As opposed...
Cause if you just, it's really simple if you just add it.
Yeah.
Because we exclude in our...
Just have it exclusive of these things as well as fences, poles, wiring.
I, I, I like the...
I don't mind, I just...
And...
I like the definition that is in our ordinance.
You do.
But to add the, um, wastewater disposal systems and the heat exchange wells and the water wells is, I think that's, that's good. That's fun.
And then it would make this, um, general requirement the way that this dock is written actually makes sense. Because if you read it the way under the definition and state, but, um, abutting any great pond means you can't put anything there.
Without getting a permit.
You need a permit.
You need a permit.
You, you talking about the...
I'm talking about legal language. I'll prove it as that.
So what I'm...
I just wanted to make sure that the current definition tracks with the state on other exclusions other than those that were recently added. And it does. So that's good. So if we add the exclusions to the definition of structure that were added in 2014, then we will have all of the exclusions that exist under state law.
Right.
And I think that may be what your concern is, and I think, yeah, so that's...
You just made her day.
It's not gonna help me, but it's gonna help the town in a way.
Right. So, so if we just, someone reads the new definition and Ashley gets, gets what we're... Then she can have it typed and printed for us to look at at the next meeting.
So, just track the state definition of structure because that relates only to things constructed for support, shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, goods and property, which excludes...
The dock doesn't. Right. I, I think we're, I, I agree from a legal perspective, we have to have the def- definition of structure right. So I think in that sentence that says exclusives of fence poles, wiring, we include, um, the wells and, and the septic. And then, I think we have the exclusions they made in 2014 and our, and our structure definition is good. But that doesn't solve the, the permanent versus temporary problem.
Well...
So it's really two issues. I, I thought we were gonna look at the structure definition, which is...
A little bit more to what you're saying, cause if you read, read the second line of our definition of structure "Or property of any kind, together with anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on or in the ground."
That's what I was saying about the...
So that kind of is indicative of these um, docks that we're talking about. But as long as we don't mind a dock, a dock is, is a structure, so that's not a problem. And then exclusive, I think we should put these, um, subsurface wastewater disposal systems, geothermal heat exchange wells and water wells first, and then put fences, poles, wiring and other aerial equipment normally associated with surface drops as well as guying and guy anchors afterward.
Are we able to follow that, Ash?
I got it.
Okay.
She'll review, she'll watch the tape over again anyway.
Okay.
Well, I would, it would just, so would read, "Together with anything constructed or erected with fixed location on the ground, exclusive of subsurface wastewater disposal systems, geothermal heat exchange wells, water wells, and as well as fences, poles, wiring." Would be a...
Yeah, I'm down with that.
Shot at it anyway. And then once, then we can read, actually see the verbiage as a paragraph and read it again and make sure...
Proofread it and go over it.
Yeah. I mean, if that...
While we're doing that, the, the five dot sixteen dot one A, the second sentence, "Nor shall any fill deposited," I'm assuming the word B should be in there? "No shall any fill be deposited or dredging done therein."
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are we talking about?
Yeah.
A, the, on the...
General requirements.
General requirements.
Just, okay.
Five, five sixteen point one A.
Second.
Second line.
After the semicolon.
After great pond.
Well, I had a five sixteen.
General requirements, A, um, second line, "Be constructed in, on, over or abutting any great pond, nor shall any fill be deposited or dredging done." But just adding the word B. I think that makes sense. It's in there. You know, he's got it in there. It's hard when they're not, different colors.
It's on page five. Jason.
I'm assuming it meant fill be deposited or dredging done.
Yes, correct.
That doesn't mess you up, does it?
No, no, I don't even have one. That's great.
Get the paddles.
Emergency fifty-one.
Thank you.
I know, there must be some way we can get them to not make it do that during the meeting, cause it's, I've heard that probably three hundred and fifty times.
Pump pump's ready.
We can go in the basement, that you don't hear it down there.
Right.
Okay. So that's a, then I noticed, um, if you look at
The town.
The warrant itself, the big white one and the yellow one, there is a difference in the, and we're still on the docks. There is a slight difference that I don't really understand. I'm on J, which is second to the last paragraph. Structures built on, over or abutting.
The one that's all struck out?
Yeah.
Right. In the yellow one, it's struck out and highlighted, and in the white one, it's just struck out.
None.
And that is one thing that somebody pointed out in town meeting, and for some reason, the white copy, the warrant, doesn't have the highlighting. Because they were saying, why is this different than the
Right.
Stands the two, two above it, which is highlighted and under.
And struck out.
Highlighted.
And I didn't actually know the answer to that question, but I, you see what I'm looking at?
Yeah, I think it's administrative. I think it's just...
So I don't understand what happened here.
Right, cause these were...
So you just wanted, you wanted to just make sure it's highlighted?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's all we need to do.
I mean, yeah, people were really picking it apart pretty, pretty seriously.
They could test Gavin's memory to see if they were like that when they first started proofreading them before our time.
Yeah, cause if you look down and where it says Article twelve, it says shaded strike through indicates a water removed. It doesn't say just a strike through.
Right.
So...
Yep. Oh, this is some...
Yeah, that would happen.
Right here.
So then our temporary wharfs and docks and so forth.
This one here is non-regulated, but it is struck out. And this one.
No, they were just trying to make it so that I believe that the code enforcement didn't have to inspect
Yeah.
Pretty much every new dock or every dock.
And that, that was just something they pointed out and didn't like. I didn't know why.
Yeah, cause a lot of them come prefab and they just roll in or, or they drop down like with the, uh, with the wires.
Right.
I like the Arizona's wooden docks, you know? Put sixteen people on it with fireworks and it collapses into a lake.
Right. So, but so what I'm asking is, are there regulations elsewhere on non-permanent docks, wharfs, size, placement, any of that?
I don't think so.
I know that the, um, Saco River Corridor Commission, um, which is, if you look in the land use chart in the zoning ordinance, under, probably under, under...
Osme, Little Osme District, I think is what you're looking for, right?
Right, exactly. But I'm looking, I'm, it's, um, other uses, it's, I'm on page sixteen. Other uses, piers, docks, wharf, bridges and other structures. Then we have temporary and permanent. And I know that they don't allow permanent dock, pretty much don't allow permanent docks in the Little Osme District, but it's a conditional use, just like the other districts in the town. And um, I think it would be interesting to get Saco River Corridors Commission's definition of permanent versus temporary, because we do, we do deal with them in the Bulge Lake,
Mm-hmm.
um, and Moose Pond and Hanson Pond and are all part of the Little Osme District. And we, so we do have to kinda work together with them in, in terms of consistency. Well, could be, could be a good reference, you know, we...
Yeah, I'm changed my mind, Gavin, with what you pointed out about that structure definition. So if they, if they're drilling posts, even for those kind that lift up, by the structure definition, then that would, that would be permit required.
Yeah, we get into this weird you know, weird, is, are all structures permanent? Is that a given?
Well...
It's like a weird area. Is that a given?
Nothing's really permanent in, in...
Yeah, if you're pouring concrete.
I mean, we would assume that every structure is permanent, right? Or it wouldn't be considered.
What's the definition of permanent? Like, how long does it have to last for, you know? You really, really wanna get into like some...
But that's what happens with these...
Yeah, you know, someone would, I can see someone's asking that, though. Next time you guys present this, well, what is permanent, you know? Right, well, like you have a I mean, everything has a, has a shelf life, a half-life, whatever you wanna call it.
Permanent. It's on page twenty-nine. Structures which remain...
No, no, I, oh, but that's just for
Yeah.
Docks.
But you mean like a general permanent definition?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, nothing's permanent.
Nothing is permanent.
I mean, a house is a permanent structure, but obviously it can burn or be torn down or...
Yeah. I know, it's just, I think, language is difficult with these things.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that, but, but what were you saying, John? Just...
No, I, I was saying, I was, you know, I'm trying to keep it simple, you know, for myself. Um, and I, I think with, you know, going back to the time requirement, that's pretty cut and dried. But then when you get into the lift dock, which is one people are wondering about mostly, if they do have to put a footer in the ground for those things, then I think it transitions, given the structure definition, to, to permanent.
But does the DEP, then the DEP does require?
I think within twenty-five, well, seventy-five feet, but definitely twenty-five feet, you know, permit by rule.
I, I don't think we have to worry about it. I think the state takes care of it. You have the comprehensive... I don't think there's a, a good reason why we shouldn't allow a razor dock. It's a, it's a type of dock.
Yeah, no, it's not that we wouldn't allow them, it's just would we...
Require state permitting and planning board, okay.
Or then maybe they would just be required to bring the state permit to the town, to the code officer or something, so he doesn't have to look at every one, but supply proof to the, to the town that they have gone through the proper process with the DEP.
Yeah. Can you ask the DEP if they consider those, if they have a, you know, a footer like that?
Yeah.
They consider that permit? Or, or just what is their view on on those dock?
That's in, yeah. That's in this thing.
That's the way I read it.
I think everything is in there.
Concrete and that's connected to, that's...
Yeah, it's abutting in the pond.
Right.
So it would require, um, DEP permit, if that's what they...
I don't mind that.
When it first happened, everything was about the definition.
Figured out.
Oh, performance. You know what I mean? He was, Kenny was big on that. Exactly.
Yeah.
When a lot of this came to our attention, cause we were doing a permit for the whole nine yards, which his whole business is pretty much putting in those aluminum razor docks. So that's what kinda brought it to the attention of the board as to what, you, you know, that's what, at least that's when I started thinking about it.
We're calling it a seasonal dock, guys. Um, I just looked it up on my phone. It says this seasonal dock is as close as you can get to a permanent dock.
Because it doesn't stay in the water?
Seasonal, cause it doesn't stay in the water.
Yeah, that's kinda what was, how it was broken down to me. It has to stay in, in the water. But, I mean, there's two sides to the argument. If I, you know, with the whole footing, does that make it permanent? But with the word dock, when you throw the dock in there, I think that's where it becomes seasonal, because the footing's permanent, but the dock isn't, isn't in the water permanently. However you wanna word that. Good luck, Ashley.
I think that kinda brings us back to Bernard's comment about safety and...
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, I, I definitely agree with...
And like how, how, how we should address... How we should address these types of docks. I think they're, it looks like they're temporary.
Yeah, and, and there should be, there should be a safety, uh, even if that cable snaps, maybe there should be a secondary or something like that, because if most of these people with camps, they shut their camps down, they take off. Now, if that falls down and you have a snowmobiler or something along the edge, and, yeah. I mean, tragedies can happen. And yeah, and regulated, maybe so many, after so many years, you have to replace, you know, said cable or, or mechanism, you know, but that should also be with the dock manufacturer too, I would think.
They should actually have a brake on them, so if that cable does break, like Baker scaffolding, you haven't worked on that? You crank up, it's got that brake on it. So if that cable snaps, that brake stops that from going down, but who knows? I mean, I'm not.
Maybe they do, and maybe the ones that you've heard about are just homemade ones, because I'm sure that people try to do that.
Oh, I'm sure.
I've seen them snap.
Everybody's an engineer when they want to be.
Parked on the lake and stuff, in the wintertime, they were down. I don't know if that's from wind or, you know, weight of the snow, snow load on it, but they do go down, so. Seen them. But they should have a safety brake on them or some, some sort.
And maybe some, some sort of height off the water or something we could consider the, how elevated the thing is when it's, is elevated.
Right. That way it's not like this.
I mean, it's, it's obviously going to be hard to enforce, but it's something that if we put it in there, it's like it helps with viability, I guess.
Something happens.
Well, Jason likes snowshoeing, so it gives him something to do in the wintertime.
I like doing what? Snowshoeing? No, I can get the town to give me a snowmobile, though.
Good luck with that.
Boat, got the boat, yeah.
Which I have yet to take out.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah.
Well, half of the construction, you can't see it from the road.
No.
Shoreline construction, it's all.
Wants to go for a boat ride next weekend. Anybody but Chris.
That's what we should do for cycle, you know, for.
I'll bring my trolling rods. We'll troll while we're cruising.
So was it the intent that, because it appears to me that by striking all the, all the language in B through H,
The yellow one.
that we're proposing to strike restrictions on sizes and how far out a temporary dock can extend?
Yes, they.
And that was intentional?
It was intentional. I mean, I, I wouldn't say, I mean, I didn't personally work on this or Dennis was kind of the, uh, mastermind behind this, this particular aspect. Um, because I personally would like to see some sort of right, you know, safeguards for the lakes that limit the size and, um, and intricacy of these things that's out there. It looks like a Christmas tree on the lake. It's like, you know, those are, I don't know where to, um, where to, you know, start, start trying to regulate that. You know what I mean? Like the Shapley has the, can't go twenty feet from the shore. I think that's, would be difficult to sell sort of, to the public, so to speak, but if we had a, you know, your dock has to be under X number of square feet. You can make it any shape you want. You know?
Well, I, I think it, it's at ten presently.
Do we regulate over the water, though?
This is where, where my thinking, what I've heard before being said about this whole section of regulation for, I think it was a nightmare.
Hmm. I know we took our, we have a zero stance when it comes to rightaways and, and stuff like that, as well as docks on rightaways. They have to, um, it's a civil matter, so, which would put it in the same situation. How am I going to regulate what a landowner does with his dock? If, or how, or the size of his dock, you know? If I can't even tell someone you can't put one, or they can put one or can't put one on a rightaway. You know, unless it's, so how?
Rightaway is a property ownership issue. If I own a piece of property and you have a rightaway to pass through it, that's between you and me and the civil court system. You have Town Act and has no interest in that. That like if I park my truck on the rightaway and you can't get through. But this is extending over into a water body and the individual doesn't own the water.
I think my jurisdiction stops at the water, high water.
And so I, I would just want to see whether any of these regulations exist at the state level. I mean, because the way I'm reading this, at one point anyway, the way this read was that you couldn't build out more than ten feet out and that it wasn't to be more than six feet wide.
Yeah.
So if you strike all that, I don't know if that was ever enforced or litigated or any of that, but if you strike that and, you know, next spring, we got people saying, well, my neighbor just built this humongous dock. It's twenty-five feet wide and it goes out fifteen feet. We've just removed any remedy for that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I would, even though I supported this at town meeting, I didn't support it when we dealt with it on the planning board, which is how it happened.
Doesn't have to fit the surrounding character or uses.
Yeah.
Um, doesn't prohibit building a structure on top of the pier or more. So again, the neighbor builds this huge dock and then they build a little tiki hut out there and.
I think, well, the dock can't be on, has to be on his property anyway.
Well, if it's out over the water, it's not.
No one owns the water.
His property.
That's the problem.
Everyone owns the water.
Right.
You know, yours is so long.
I'm just concerned about what all is being removed if the, if that existed before, if it was enforced before, became the norm before, and then we strike it all and just say, well, now we're only dealing with permanent docks. And anything that's temporary, have at it. That's basically what this is doing.
Yeah.
If it's temporary, have at it.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's a good idea.
Right. It's certainly an issue.
Just saying. As people said tonight.
How many lakes do we have? It's like, it's impossible.
Seven. Yeah, and I think that was part of the motivation for Ken, right? There was too much for him to do. He couldn't check all those.
I haven't come across a folder yet that has a permit for a dock in it, so.
Yeah, no, it wasn't really being enforced and that's why it was being removed, but at the same time, there are other entities in the town that could enforce it, like the lake associations could be saying, you know, your dock's too big, like if we got, we kept verbiage in there that spec, specified the maximum size of these things, the lake associations could use that to their benefit to work within their own lake and get everyone on board with that, and you know, if we showed, you know, we you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It wouldn't have to be the code officer, but people, I had a hard time convincing the other board that that would, that that made sense.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to me, absent any language, really all you have is, I don't like this huge dock you built or how close it is to mine, any of that, and it's like, well, that's too bad, isn't it, that you don't like it?
Yeah.
Even though common sense may dictate that anyone could look at it and say, well, oh my God, this is, you know, it's huge, it takes up, you know, space that everyone customarily used to swim.
Well, even in, in a bay situation, everyone's dock is going out at ninety from the shoreline. They're all going to meet in the middle of the bay, so somebody's larger dock would be constricting someone else's dock, and then your boat's trying to come in and go to the docks and the, I mean, there is something to that.
I think some of the property owners have covenants too. You talk about the lake associations. I think that, that that's regulated by, you know, those little associations.
Right, but I.
Not saying what you're saying is invalid.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just a discussion. I'm, I'm not, this isn't something I'm hanging my hat on. I'm just, these are discussions we had before in the planning board and.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we're going to be able to, you know, get this thing ready tonight, obviously, but we need to, you know, I mean, because we have some different directions that we're going with docks. But I think it is something we should think about. Do we want to do something like Shapley did where we kind of spell it out or, and not, and not worry about the code enforcement or officer having to do with it, even though it's in the zoning ordinance, which people don't always like that approach? Or should we only put things in the zoning ordinance that the code officer is dealing with? You know?
Yeah, I don't know.
His thing to.
It's one of those things is if you choose to deal with it, or you don't, if I choose not to deal with it one time and then I choose to deal with it the next time, then I get scrutinized. Because while he didn't do it for him, but I did it for, and he did it for them, so then that becomes a favorite, favoritism, so you either have it in there or you don't, and you either enforce it or you don't. I don't, I don't know, just.
Yeah, exactly. And, but, I mean, we could, we could be enforcing it through something as simple as the secretary writes a letter that's already pretty much, you know, sends a letter to the landowner who's, whose dock is, is, has caused the complaint. You know, so that there isn't as much, you know, you're not taking your time to go to these sites, but the way you take, you know.
Yeah, I think you wouldn't, right, you wouldn't have to go to temporary ones and, and check them. I think it would self-police through the associations as somebody call them and then, you know, then a letter goes out and you tell them to stop, or the association approaches the homeowner and.
Maybe a letter would go to the homeowner, hand to the lake association or something like that. But we'd have to, I mean, we'd maybe want to meet with the lake association representatives to discuss it with them to, you know, the bare report on this could be, you know, is valuable.
Yeah.
This is just discussion. I don't know if we need to.
So, but that's, that's what happens when we talk about these things. There's amazing amount to them.
I'm going to do a little research on this, see if there's case law or anything in Maine on these issues, because I just think in my experience in life, that often with waterfront property, people tend to really be hyper vigilant in scrutinizing and are protective, understandably, of what they're accustomed to being able to do and not do, and if conflict arises with people, um, the more clear it is what their remedy is or where they go to redress it versus taking things into their own hands, uh, the better.
You know, it's funny, in the strike, I don't see anything about the length of a pier in a pond. That's ten feet is in a stream.
Right.
And then down below, it's, you know, the tiki hut. Apparently they could build as long as it was no more than twenty feet above the pier, which is weird.
I only saw the width. I didn't see a length or anything.
Uh, where did I see? Maybe I misread on the ten feet.
Yeah, I think there was a lot about the length, because we have such differing depth, water bodies.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, ten feet applied to a river.
Okay.
Ten feet almost put you across every river around here at some points.
Nowhere that.
That's a bridge.
Or a bridge, yeah.
What was the cover of? I'm just trying to think if there was anything else we were going to actually talk about. There was another definition we were going to talk about or?
My notes said structure and docks and piers. That's what I went and looked at in a couple of other ordinances. Ashley put short-term rentals on the.
Oh, rentals, a definition for rentals, I agree.
You guys did talk about rentals and solar panels that didn't really make a definite, that's what you wanted to talk about, what you kind of discussed.
I think it's just.
Yeah, I think we should just.
We're definitely not doing all that tonight.
We should determine a couple to discuss at the next meeting.
Yeah, right.
The next meeting will, will review the definition of, of a structure, the proposed definition. Will, will retouch on the dock issue and see if anybody dug anything up they want to share with us.
Other than maybe jumping off one at this point.
Yeah. And then.
Long walk on a short dock.
Maybe if there's something else people wanted to address at the next meeting.
I just got a question, and it has nothing to do with the docks and piers. So the forest management, we are striking that just so the town does nothing, has nothing to do with timber harvesting, and are we taking that stance still right now? I'm only asking because I'm meeting with somebody tomorrow.
Yes, no, we, we have, as far as we know, there's now is absolutely nothing in the zoning ordinance pertains to forest management, timber harvesting, so permits are, are just dealt with through the state.
The state.
Entirely.
Except for the shoreline.
Right, which you're only allowed to selectively cut. Right.
I think that's it for.
Right. Though, there was some, there was some discussion when we were dealing with the timber harvesting, that I personally would like to have something in the zoning ordinance that says that the town needs to be notified. At the same time that the state, that they apply for the permit or whatever, because for the town, it, I mean, it would help to know where there's going to be mud on the road ahead of time, sort of thing.
Yeah.
And when they just go through the state, the town doesn't find out till the harvest is done.
Right.
So, and it, and it, and it was in the zoning ordinance, it was taken out already, previous to this time, that the town was supposed to be notified as well, but, but that's something I'd like to see in there. And I.
That makes sense.
I don't see that it would really interfere with what the state was doing. It's just that the state didn't, I don't know, it was, it was just a weird situation, but we, we really have nothing to do with it now, but I'd still like to be informed.
Sure, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Is that an issue we can take up with the state to request, you know, copies when they come in or?
You deal with the state often?
Well, I think one of the big problems was that the, the state was, that the, at the state level, agr, agriculture, conservation and forestry became one department.
Right.
And so the person that was actually writing these permits and mailing them back out was dealing, it was like one person for half of the state, for all three of those things, and it just didn't, there was nothing to it. I mean, it would be months before we got that.
I feel like I've gotten permits, though, I feel like I've had some arrive before the actual harvesting's been done.
Well, they might be doing.
I have to look back into it, but I, I knew of some harvesting going on and somebody had called complaining and I was able, I, I had already received the permit.
Oh, well, that's good.
And I don't know if that happens all the time or something, that's maybe something that they were trying to do, but yeah, I had.
Did you receive it from the state?
State, it comes in a.
Because I feel like the landowner should notify.
Yeah, no, the state sent me an agricultural permit, agricultural permit for, for timber harvesting.
Well, shouldn't they be cleaning the mud off the?
And then it gives you the date of when it will start and complete it.
Harvester should be doing that. Yeah, well, no, but the, the problem was that we weren't getting it from the state soon enough.
Yeah.
So if the landowner notified the town,
Right.
that would be more direct.
I was just curious, because I didn't, I just wanted to go, I just wanted to make sure I had all my things in row.
Right, because you have to meet with somebody.
Yeah, I just, uh, he, yeah. Just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to regulate what he was doing in a sense of, I, I know there is, he wants to cut on the shoreline a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to worry about his backlog as well.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, you know, I feel like it is a shame that we don't have to worry about that sort of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
That the state isn't really watching what's going on outside the shoreline zone, but that's, that's where we're at.
So then how's that buffer zone work then too? Then where's your two fifty?
Well, the 250, but then within the distance between 100 and the 250, they're allowed to...
Up to 40% or something like that?
Yes, there's some regulations for that. And then once they're within the 100, there's other regulations for that. I think, I think between the 100 and the 250, they're not allowed to make a clear opening bigger than 10,000 square feet. And the openings are supposed to be separated by 100 feet of wooded land. Which is something that...
I'll have to do a little bit more research tomorrow morning and figure it out.
Yeah.
These harvesters really should know their job, I mean, like, they should be knowing too what they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing.
You mean you're the landowner or...
Yeah, well, the other people actually harvesting, because they act, the harvester will put in for the permit, I think, most of the time. And they're local. I know the company that's doing it, like, by name, you know, and they're local. So they've done stuff around here. So you would hope that they would know. But anyway.
They know, but at the same time...
Yeah, what can I get away with?
Financially based, you know, the more wood you take out, the more money you get.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, but that's, yeah, I mean, we should be totally done with the timber harvesting, you know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to have that sidebar going on.
That's a good conversation.
And there, I mean, there was other, just other, you know, there was a conversation as to whether or not we should require a forester for a commercial harvest in the town or not. Things like that, you know, but that, those are all things that we, we probably aren't gonna discuss again, so.
You're not on the forestry committee, isn't there a forestry committee or something like that? I met with him.
Conservation and forest.
Yeah, I met with him.
With Steve.
Yeah, the other day.
Well, he's trying to, he has some projects going in the town. Forest management plans and things like that regarding the town forests. Because we have several town forests.
Right.
And...
And he wants to selectively cut through those too, I think, if he wanted to do his discussion.
There's a few of them and some of them have already been pretty thoroughly harvested. But there's still another one on Town Farm Road, which is, that has, in the back is an IFW waiting bird habitat. And there's multiple sized wetlands throughout the parcel and it's, um, one of the reasons that we had to go through this whole getting rid of the forestry thing is because we had, because we, we, we did have some town regulations regarding our smaller wetlands and what they could do. And as soon as those were obliterated, the state doesn't really care about anything under 10 acres. So smaller wetlands, like a six acre swamp, there's no buffer. They can harvest the resource itself now because the state is, is 10 acres and greater or vernal pools. And they kind of forget about the middle and... So, yeah, that's a little, but, um, it is, it is an item of interest where there is a forest management plan proposed. It hasn't been, um, put forward to town meeting yet. But, you know, regarding the town forest on Old Town Farm Road.
So that plan only applies to the town, the town forests?
Yes, the forest management plan. It's, it's two parcels, but they're contiguous. They're just one on one side of the road and one on the other side of the road.
So Jason, if we adjourned early enough, is there any reason you couldn't get all this research and stuff done tonight instead of...
Yeah, nope, not happening.
Which, the research or us adjourning early?
Oh, the research. We can adjourn early.
So what, what does our agenda look like next time?
Do we have... What are we doing, what is on the agenda? Next time we'll have two greatest practical extents on it. So...
Oh, well, we need to discuss something that we're adding to the agenda tonight, but, because it came up last week is how far out do we want our information? Like, do we want it coming in like a week before, ahead of time? So we have time to review it at home and...
Well, this week, we, I think we talked about it a little bit last week, but this week was different because I wasn't doing, I don't have the time to do it and Ashley was on vacation. And, um, that's why there was such a, a late delivery on, on what was going on. I just don't, I physically don't have time to sit in front of the computer and, and do the minutes. Uh, I had barely had enough time to even do any permits, so I was just too busy chasing everything around, so.
But we as a board have to decide how, how do we want to go about it?
Right, well, I mean, we, we definitely want to try to get it to you within a week. We would like to do that, you know, that's our, our goal. Um, we also have to wait on, um, them to post the video, so then we can do, she can sit down and do the minutes. Uh, so to say that I could give it to you guys in 10 days is not feasible because...
Well, that's, the minutes doesn't matter, it's just the agenda.
Yeah, so I want everything to...
Applicants' information, so like tonight, we had Billy plant, so we could have signed that thing tonight, but it wasn't ready, but if we'd had it last week, we could have said, oh, you know, just move the... Or whatever that, you know, make these small changes and then he would have, we could have signed it tonight because he would have had, you know...
Yeah, he just didn't bring in, he didn't bring any of that in. He brought it himself.
But then also gives all of us a good chance to research this stuff before.
Right.
And so...
So we had given, when I, when I had started, it was told to me and we can change it. But Thursday prior to the planning board meeting, all, all applicants had to come in. And this is what you're asking? So what, because that was their deadline to be on the planning board, so it was a Thursday prior.
Like the agenda like this.
Well, that gives you your agenda, doesn't it?
Right.
Then the actual application, so you need them Thursday prior.
It would be Friday. So I can even make it sooner than, I mean, if they don't do it, you know, by Tuesday, so you guys can have the information for Thursday. You know, or something like that, or when, you know, whatever it is, if you guys want the information, you want the agenda by Thursday. Well, what do you, let's put it this way, what do you guys want?
Well, what, what we're talking, at least what I'm talking about is the actual submission, right? So somebody comes in with a conditional use, they filled out the form, they provided the additional information. Getting that the Friday before, if you, if your deadline is Thursday, so you should have that Thursday. If we could get that Friday, to me, that's perfect because that gives us time to look at it and think about it and research.
And that's, and you know, and obviously you guys realize and have to understand that there's a lot of learning curves going on downstairs. But that's why, that is our intentions is to, by Thursday, if they, if it's not in by Thursday, then they're not gonna get on it.
Right, good.
And really, if there was something where somebody was like, oh, we need, we'll call, contact you guys, but that's the, that's what we're planning on. Thursday before, then you guys can have it for the weekend, digest it and look at it and, um...
That sounds good.
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
I think oftentimes...
And if there's any kind of, any kind of hiccup that we're, can't get it to you for that Friday, we will definitely, we'll reach out to you via whatever, email, postal express, I don't know.
Postal express.
Yep. No, yeah, so if we can try to get it to you the Friday before, you know, so you guys have six, seven, six days, six nights, whatever.
Yeah, I think that would be great, if we could do that.
Yeah, I think that's good and I also want to say, I think we all recognize that you are still on the learning curve and some of us are too. The last thing that I want to do certainly is to add pressure and stress to people's jobs. I think that you're doing great and, um, I also, I really think the minutes are looking great. I think they have improved even in the town, which you would expect when people just start out. But, um, so I'm, I'm impressed with what I see. So thank you.
Well, um, what we can probably do too is post it online about, uh, if somebody's coming in for, for conditional uses, application permits, if they, when they wanting be seen or reviewed, then they need, you know, let them know.
Give them heads up.
So they, they can't come in on a Friday and be like, oh, well, your meeting's on until next week, you know, can I get on it? Well, no, you know, so if we post it and make it public so that they know that they have to have it at least by the Thursday and, you know.
Gives everybody a break.
Yeah. I mean, they just haven't been, they haven't been coming in the office that, you know, you know, I think right now you're gonna have people where the winters coming, they're gonna try to get their spring projects in. I think you're gonna start seeing maybe a little bit more. But I really haven't had a lot come in my office for anything that needed planning board review lately, you know? So I'm hoping more come in.
Two best possible occasions.
Next week, of next week, and that's it right now.
And then we got this, we want to review the...
The dock.
Definition of the structure.
Structure.
Yeah. And, yeah, whatever, whatever we...
What else we want to do with the dock.
Yeah.
Do you guys want me to contact the state? Or you guys don't need...
Well, I mean, maybe if we can just clarify the definitions, the D E P definitions or...
Because I can ask them if they have any clarification on, on, I mean, on those particular... On the docks, are we gonna leave them as temporary, I mean, they're temporary or they're not or whatever, I mean, what are we, I don't even know. Sure, I'll, I'll call them and ask them what their opinion is.
I don't think...
It's not gonna hurt.
You saw it was temporary.
Seasonal, right.
It's what they're advertising. That's what the company is advertising.
Oh, the company.
But that also, you know, well, I wouldn't...
Well, I'll, I can contact somebody, uh, and see if they're, what they're, uh...
I'm not laughing at you.
And do we want to try that?
We're laughing with you. Oh, I keep taking my shit.
Yeah, I... You should probably put one of the other ones on.
Right. Which the...
My angle's a slow one.
Just like storage building one, I don't even know if we need to discuss.
I, that was just purely administrative, is my recollection, like the things lined out didn't match and...
But we could all review that.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you all just want to just read through the storage buildings one again and make sure that the only corrections we needed are those brought out letters to be dealt with?
Yeah.
Because maybe there's something else that we overlooked that we could...
Right.
We have time to, but I don't think there's a lot we need to do with that one.
Yeah.
I think the most difficult one is gonna be the rentals.
Yeah.
Our rentals.
Yeah.
But I think the storage and the docks and the definition would probably be enough for the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Right.
So I'm just bouncing.
But I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna want to talk about the oxygen, but...
We'll see what brings, right?
Yeah, yeah, new information would be great.
So Ashley just threw some dates in here, if you guys decided that you did want some extra meetings to do, to review these, whether you do or you don't, uh, like September 30th and October 14th. I don't, what are those, just Thursdays?
Off Thursdays.
Yeah. And obviously I think we gotta make sure that the hall's not being, even if the hall is being used, then we can just go downstairs. When you review the ordinance and make changes, is this, is it still public? For all, every meeting you guys get together, it's public?
Yeah, if there's a quorum. But it seems like if we don't have a lot of applicants, we can just keep doing it on...
Yeah, I'd have to look in to see what the budget is too for, I don't know how that work plays out with having them getting filled every, every time. I know if I just sit go and say, hey, yeah, we can do it, then I might get screwed, you know, someone might come down on me saying, hey, uh, that's not in your budget. You know, I don't know how that works. I gotta, I just want to make sure.
Changes?
No, to, to have extra meetings.
Oh, I don't think it really affects the budget that much because the, which it's just the camera, that's a... Pretty much just the cameras, the cost.
I just don't know how much they, they, if they charge or, you know, for extra meetings or however that works for set, camera setup and...
I don't think, yeah, check into it, but I don't, I don't remember it being a problem in the past, but...
Okay, if it hasn't been a problem in the past, then it won't be now, but I just, I just wanted to, before we go and sets more dates, then I want to make sure that it's something that can, that it's...
Right, good question.
I think it was pretty effective.
So, and maybe we could, I mean, we could get, um, the state verbiage for a normal rental. Because the state has their stipulations for a rental and, you know, we don't have, we don't have anything about any type of rental in the ordinance. So we could take those and at least receive that next time so that we could review it and figure out how we could comprise our new, new approach.
Start.
Yeah. I don't think we can discuss it much. Which if, if people think that's a good way to go.
I think it's a good start point.
Yeah, I do too.
Reinvent the wheel.
I don't think there's too much wrong with the way the ordinance is, I think the arguments that people were making.
Yeah, it was mostly financial arguments. They didn't want to have to pay those extra bills.
Well, there was two that wanted to, whatever, they kept questioning about long-term rentals too.
Yeah, that was the...
That's what I'm saying, if we can get the state verbiage from long-term rentals and then figure out, you know, figure out how we're gonna incorporate in the zoning ordinance and then incorporate what we have about short-term rentals with that. Pack it together, we'll start moving that way.
How is this gonna work with, uh, existing structures? It doesn't matter? Like if you have, it's already, a rental's a rental, so if you want to be a rental, you have to comply?
I think it should be that way for safety issue.
Oh, for sure, I agree. I definitely agree.
Right, egress window, you know, every...
Man, I mean...
Fire, smoke detectors.
I hundred, I hundred percent agree too. And if you're looking to make a profit on something, then you gotta, if you have to spend a little extra, then...
Yeah, you gotta make money.
You know, and I know some people are doing it just to pay their mortgages, but that's...
But it's also a second home to them.
Right.
But usually.
Usually, usually, well, I would think so if they're renting it out.
Well, I think some people rent part of their building and they live in another one.
Or like room rental or something like that.
But I, you know, and, and you can bring in Rick, you can bring in Rick Smith on that too if you want to. Because he was the one who really, really pushed for that, as I understand. Because for safety reasons, for the fire department, you know, all that stuff, you know, make sure that you're only renting out what you should be because, you know, it's the, you know, if you get a emergency call and they're going to the wrong door, the wrong place or something like that.
But they can't get it through the window.
And they can't, yeah.
And then if we could bring Joyce in on this as well, uh, she was, um, George Bashki?
Oh, yeah.
She had quite a bit to say about, uh, you know, liability and how the town is, is wide open. I mean, if we just bring those people in again, that, I think that would be really helpful for us. They would save us a lot, a lot of legwork. A $2,000 window, oops, coulda, shoulda, woulda, oh, died.
Right.
You know, you're making money anyway, take some of the money, put it into the stupid window.
I agree a hundred percent and the fact that people were fighting it was, I thought was just really, you know, I don't know. That's my, that's my personal opinion. It's not, you know.
That's valid. I agree.
And then not to throw more work at us, but I, I do think we should do some of it, so, you know. You know, we can clean these up first and then if we have time, I think, um, you know, not having solar panels addressed at all probably has to be addressed.
Yeah, it's only in the land use chart.
Yeah, but it was...
Renewable energy is a conditional use permit. It's only, only place it's in there, I think.
Oh, I didn't even, I didn't even recognize what was there.
Uh, yeah, where is that?
Renewable energy.
It's the very last thing under essential services, because I remember, because we had on an existing structure and installed on a non-existing.
Yeah. Like I was looking at Standish and they had, in their definitions, they had three or four different definitions, like big projects, so many panels or squares and small projects and different requirements because of the size. I mean, there's a lot there to get smart on, on, on that stuff.
What do we also have to deal with the escrow too?
Yeah, that has to change.
Yeah, we got it.
Which I think is just strike the other two.
Right, I agree on that one.
It's an easy change if we think it's the thing to do.
From the town's perspective, I thought Bernie was quite eloquent about that when we discussed the guy who came back in. But, you know, it's not, the town shouldn't be put at risk.
On the escrow.
Yeah. Letter of credit or bond or escrow.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Hold on, the pending products, projects, okay, and property management, no action taken. Now you want to go?
I do. I move that we adjourn the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I just want to be on the record every week as either moving or seconding, so.